...that has to deal with healthcare insurance that is more than out to any call. But all teachers, so therefore I am going to vote no.
Ms. King? Ms. Salkiri?
Yes.
Ms. Tavona?
Four.
Okay, tell me what we do now.
Resolution?
So we have, we don't have that then? We don't have what we had last time? What would you like to tell these teachers that?
If I, if I understand correctly, it would be UMR. With failed function, the UMR, couple of them still be on. Provocative, they have been cancer, right? Totally did cancer.
Do we go back to blue cross blue shield?
The, I'm just gonna double check my numbers. I think there's a negative financial impact of us starting doing this. And if my numbers are correct, I will notify the board and if it can be put on the website, then I can overrule this, this board on the other. And we'll see with them. But I'm just gonna check my numbers. Any good answer getting tomorrow?
Did everyone, did everyone hear that? Did everyone hear that?
So you're gonna give an answer tomorrow?
Yes, and Mr. Egan will rule one way or the other on the motion. He has the ultimate say so. Yes.
What communication will there be as a union regarding the insurance?
I would, I would hold that. Mr. Egan would communicate with the superintendent. Mr. Egan will communicate with the superintendent, who will then communicate with your president and vice president ASAP as soon as they get an answer.
What, what I'm gathering here is he's gonna overrule and we'll be switching ahead and then we'll rule in front of that.
This is the superintendent?
Correct.
The process will be, I just wanna double check the financial impact of staying with UMR because it's gonna be substantial. I'm just gonna double check it. With that final financial motivation, considering that we're facing a deficit of over 400 dollars, I will, if I overrule it, I will notify in writing the superintendent, the first of the board president, the rest of the board, the superintendent. I will order, one way or another, I will order that by decision we put on the website and that the heads of the associations will also receive communications that we are certain that the, everybody's got.
Thank you. Our concern is, I just wanna reiterate that we understand, and even through the last perp decision between the change from Horizon to UMR, that decision deemed UMR essentially not equal or better. So therefore, we should be comparing the AHTA plan that you can just vote down, but it does occur that you approve it. It should be equal or better than the Horizon originally, correct?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer that to Joe Morello from INAC, and we'll discuss it.
Okay, so would you give back to me on that?
But, but, what's, what's that?
Did you follow me on that?
What, what's, when, when? When was this, when was this switch made?
The switch from Horizon to UMR was in, we got those by the summer of 2016. It didn't, that take until 2017. January, again, in January. Either way, it's 16, okay? Right, that's what we got to notice from, so I don't know safety of the switch. But I don't think we saw the actual change of January, it doesn't back down.
So, if you, if I heard you correctly, your question is that would the equal to or better be judged against UMR or against Horizon?
Correct.
All right. Yeah, I'll get an answer, okay?
Thank you.
Hi. I have a question. I'm just, I'm Erin, so I always have some questions regarding city insurance. They don't work with that, so I don't know, but is the new contract with AHTA at a better rate? Because I know that their old terms, when we tried to get rid of, there was an error without some charges. So is the new rate that AHTA negotiated at a Romeo's rate, or they don't have to pay more, is correct?
The, the rate for, okay.
No, 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 the old terms that they had now, we're trying to get rid of. They said that it was, they feel like they're charging us wrong, because they don't have any map anymore. So they were charged, they charged wrong and were trying to get that corrected, and that they don't have to pay. Is AHTA honoring the Romeo's command, or the correction that's on the supposed to be part of that?
Basically, it's, it's, the premium rate that the employees and the district joint will pay is calculated in December for the 2016 year. So one year doesn't stay with you. Whatever happened in the past, whatever's doing right now, so come, come December, the new rate for January will be cut, whether it would be AHTA or UMR. That's when they cut the new rate. And that new rate, that, that, no, the new, the new rate, the new rate is calculated on the amount of claims that were presented and received in 12 months.
So we don't know?
No, because, because we don't know, we don't know what language.
Okay.
I'm personally, I gotta teach at a little school, I think. I have a question. If you were to present it with the AHTA information, why doesn't have to be voted on tonight? Why can't you all be presented with it? Read it over, read it, see if it's equal or better to Horizon or UMR or whatever, and then make a decision. Is there a deadline? Like, why does it have to be voted on?
To cancel, to cancel UMR policy?
So is the deadline canceled?
Right. And the thing, and the reason that I voted yes, is because we were presented with a letter guaranteeing that it would be equal to, or if not better than. I have a pretty good statement, because I have these on the board in common. And, and I'm as interested as you are to find out what Mr. Egan's gonna come up with.
I mean, is there a line to sort of present it to be true?
I voted no, because I had so many questions. And people have been coming to me and asking me, and I don't know the answer.
What's the deadline?
So therefore, I can't answer before I want to.
From what I understand, the deadline is six, is it, it's a 60-game notice, and it goes back to the January 1st start.
When you, when you make your decision, which I'm thinking it's longer to be equal or better, you know, whatever, but is there a way that we can then learn more about insurance from INAC? Are you willing to come and talk to us?
Absolutely.
Promise?
Promise.
That was, that was the thing. That's why we wanted to change the I O time to be English, because none of our questions were being answered. And I really think that the teachers deserve to know what they're letting themselves into. And yeah, they can always agree that if it doesn't, if it doesn't ensure it's greater than or equal to, but that's why those in the barn drawer actually, of course, are , I'm sure, that I know, like, as I said. Okay, I, I'm willing to think we need to hear from, they need to get into the schools.
Everybody needs to get from INAC.
Yes.
Specifically, the employees and the schools, we have a plan set, and we're gonna be doing that expeditiously, that everybody gets the information, and we'll just conclude the board in quickness.
Why wasn't you around here to help answer these questions, can I?
In reference back, yes.
It's like, you know, this sign, and then we'll find out later what's in it. I've heard that before, and I don't think that tonight is parent, uh, teachers who have children and they have to pay a lot more.
Well, I, I, I personally am respectfully disagreeing with you. I respectfully disagree with you. Everything you just said.
Hi, David, David Schwab, over at Elliott. You keep talking about this better or equal than that. I just wanna confirm and clarify for our sake. Is that a different letter than this Maritana House letter that you used up here before? Are we talking about the same letter? So this is the very same letter that we have on here, this Maritana House head mark of the message? Okay. Yes, and the, the first paragraph, it says equal to or better than, correct? And then in the second paragraph, I'd like to list all the things that it says that they looked at, which is the benefit level amounts, cost share responsibilities, plan limitation, and maximus. And I'd like to list all the things they specifically say they did not compare, which is provider networks, new methodologies participating and non-participating providers, reimbursed their policies, including but not limited to COVID and vulnerable complaints, benefit utilization, exceptions, administrative medical policies and practices, including but not limited to prior authorization, medical necessity, and utilization review or management. I'm lucky to explore, perhaps it's very locked, if we didn't check this column, how is that better to or equal?
Many of these school districts that are represented by not only NJDA, but also by, what's the group that's, it's in the United States, I'm confused. Also have coverage with AHTA, which is someone.
So if anyone else does, we think that that's okay?
No, this is, this is basically, it's a, it's a, it's already vetted by NJDA.
I just wanna play that, because while we could be putting this on, just, I don't know if you're saying that this is equal to or better.
Hi, my name is Tracina, I'm a young teacher at N G A. I just have a question. You just said the NJDA getting that can compare, but what is the plan of comparing to? Because perhaps that could be equal to or better, but for ours, it may not. I just wanna say that when we switched to UMR, it was a very similar situation, a lot of structure passed, and we were insured that it was equal to or better, when in fact it was not. Now, I had known what was in our, what we were entitled to under the Horizon plan, and had I not known what we were entitled to, I would have accepted less coverage under UMR. But I knew we not did this, that we were allowed, so on and so forth. But had I been, had I got that knowledge, I would have accepted less coverage. So that is concerning to me now, that we're now going to take a new plan that is being compared to UMR, which is less than Horizon.
Would you reverse or underper?
In that stating that UMR was not equal to Horizon. So if we do go with AHTA and compare it to UMR, it may be better.
Excuse me, I didn't realize, I'm not hearing for the first time, that, that some legal word was filed with PERT. Did you know, you said with PERT, I, was there? It was a PERT decision?
Yes.
The first decision, the board and then association agreed that had their own discrepancies to be covered, the board picked it up, since it worked out the way that. So in UMR?
No, no, I, I, I.
UMR was deemed less than?
No, no, I, I'll just speak to that for just a second, Mr. Williams, and I'm familiar with that situation. And in fact, what the board had done, in the event that there was discrepancy, the board had agreed that they would make sure that the employee wouldn't be harmed as a result. When there is a change, equal to or better than is a legal standard, so we talk about this letter, and we talk about, well, this may not have been looked at, or this may not have been looked at. Equal to or better than comes from actually a case. A bunch of lawyers determine what equal to or better than, and none of them were really insurance brokers. So while it's a legal standard of equal to or better than, in the prior case, Mr. Williams, as you point out, there was a, an agreement with respect to how to handle those cases, and to my knowledge, although you would have to correct me where I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, when employees may have had an issue, and I'm not even gonna say that that employees benefited what didn't mean equal to or better than, but if the employee had an issue, the issue was resolved, between the board, the employee, and to the extent the association got involved, although to my knowledge, Mr. Williams, I believe the employees were coming to us, we had designated individual who actually responded to and handled the claims directly with UMR, in the event that there was some kind of discrepancy. So, I, I, you know, I understand the concern, and I totally agree that there, there was an agreement with respect to how to handle those issues. I can't speak to what will happen moving forward. I can tell you how it was handled when there was a change with blue cross blue shield. It, if it was blue cross blue shield, because I, I believe it was blue cross blue shield coming into the UMR plan, and then there was an agreement with respect to how to handle those issues. So I, I, you know, I can, I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, that's what it is. So our, our, our question is simply like I said before. And, and you said you checked into it, does it get compared? Does it, it get compared on an equal or better than basis to the UMR? Or to the Horizon, which we know by default, this document is not stated, UMR is equal to.
So, so, and, and that's gonna be sort of a deeper discussion, but when, when you're talking about it, then you have to talk about the network of physicians, you have to talk about pre-authors, and you talk about a whole bunch of issues that could still mean equal to or better than, but there may be some kind of a net, a legal standard of equal to or better than, that there's some, some, I'm sorry.
Essentially, like Mr. Egan, Mr. Egan said, we're gonna, we're gonna get a case, and then we're gonna have to agree to or do something to try and fix it?
Well, let's hope we don't have to get there.
If, if in fact, there isn't a situation like that.
As you said earlier, Mr. Williams, let's hope we don't have to get there.
I think there's not that good, that, we're gonna close the door after the words. Right, I mean, that's essentially kind of what it is.
Anyone else? Chris, you gotta finish, or are you done? So, you know, let's, let's go back there one second. So what, what is going to happen so they know? Because I'm a little confused myself. We're gonna let them know tomorrow, Mr. Egan?
Yes.
Okay. And that will be through?
It could be in writing, addressed to the, to the board and the superintendent. Communication with them events, the association to all the employees. They make us take the first communications possible.
And that'll be tomorrow?
That'll be tomorrow.
Education and curriculum, Ms. Salkiri?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following actions listed under the category of education and curriculum committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each accepted actions will be entertained. We are going to table number seven, because it hasn't been presented to the end curriculum committee as a committee. So we can't recommend it if it wasn't presented to us yet. So I'm going to ask for a roll over on numbers one to six, eight to 14.
Roll call. Malick? Ms. Jarvis? Grandinopoulos?
Four.
Dravaskova?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Donovan? Ms. King? Ms. Salkiri?
Four.
Ms. Tavona?
Four.
Policies, rules, regulations. Ms. Strabas.
For a member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies and rules related to committee, assuming to take now a separate motion, each of the accepted actions will be entertained. If you are not, I have moved that one to three, the office.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Grandinopoulos?
Four.
Dravaskova?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. King?
Four.
Ms. Salkiri?
Four.
Ms. Tavona?
Four.
Community relations is safe with Joe Spring?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of orders to use the nation's and state's community, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. If you are not, I have moved that either to one through eight, the office.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Grandinopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Dravaskova?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. King?
Four.
Ms. Salkiri?
Four.
Ms. Tavona?
Four.
Athletic student activities, sharing?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of athletic student activities, athletic student activities, something with each committee, may take now in separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. If you are not, I have moved that one through three, the office.
Second. Roll call. Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Grandinopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Dravaskova?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. King?
Four.
Ms. Salkiri?
Four.
Ms. Tavona?
Four.
Personnel? Ms. Drell?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted, accepted actions will be entertained.
Second.
If you are not, I have moved that one through three, the office.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Grandinopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Dravaskova?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. King?
Four.
Ms. Salkiri?
Four.
Ms. Tavona?
Four.
Michelle Larenco?
Hello. So I have a question regarding parent teacher conferences. Obviously, there's a high demand for active near in the district, which the board has mentioned, we have the township have a draft in providing, you know, for an active near working parents. So in this regard, I would like to ask, if the board would consider changing parent teacher conferences or adding a new conference? I know that it can't be done this year, but it's something that could be retained for future years.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Greco, did? Give it, I think it has to be, it's negotiated, and it's something that has to be brought up with the LDA. And I'm sure that we could look into it. I mean, I, I don't know, but myself, I, I taught for 40 years, we always had our parent teachers conferences at night, when parents were available. This was the first place that I knew about happening during the day, so.
Well, last year it happened too, and we talked the ball in asking this last year, and it was, you know, and I just thought, keeping the mood of the night, and, you know, reaching out to parents, especially working parents, we got my trust that lead with active care, so I was asking, and I know it's a negotiation, I know that we have to discuss with teachers, and I know teachers, and there's some things that every parent do, but we do have a lot of working parents in town, and as a working parent, if I didn't sleep a day, I would like to use my days very wisely, if like it's sick, or if there's something else, but I would also advocate to be thoughtful to people.
I can just, just throw a little bit extra. You know, I wanna be careful what I says, because yes, it's, it's a negotiated type of thing, basically because it is currently in the contract. And, and just the few months that I've been here, our teachers do a lot, you know, they go home and beyond, so I think that, you know, I don't think it's something that can't be discussed, I think it's something that has been a little bit on the radar. I have seen it done both ways, so it's definitely something that would benefit the parent that's working, probably including our teachers that work, that get to do, I know for me, my son's school has one minute, that you could go to it one day, or two days and one day, it's like, yeah, I don't, because I can't go every day, unless I took a personal day. So, yes, I think everybody would be willing to have a conversation about that, so I didn't have our negotiating committee, which I'm not, by the way, I'm conflicted from being a negotiator, but I can, you know, be a resource for the negotiating.
from being a negotiator, but I can, you know, be a resource for the negotiating team and be in the same location, but not in the room at the table, so it doesn't mean that. But again, I think it's something that everybody would consider, so.
Thank you.
And I don't want to speak to that, but I know that they do a lot.
That's fine, I just wanted to ask that out there.
Sure.
And as far, and I just want to echo what you said, as far as the teachers do, I'm only, this is my second year within the school district of a parent, and I've been very pleased with all the teachers that my children have had, so I have nothing to bring, things to say about that, so thank you. The last thing I would like to ask is, in my other town, when I was going from a board that means the agenda, it was completely posted online, and I noticed that when I appeared to some of the meetings, that the personnel portion is never posted online, so I would just love to know if there's a week to do that, or if you can start completing the full agenda.
I think I respond with that, it's something that I personally would be fine with, I think it's something that the board, which I don't necessarily think has a problem with it, but I, I know that, I don't know the entire history of why that was done, so as I'm trying to gather that information, I don't think it's, I think it's a reasonable request, and I think it is common in other districts. I don't think every district, I know there's districts that do something similar, where they don't, you know, post it online, but the majority that I know do, so it's definitely something that I think the board would consider.
I mean, I'm looking at you because you're front and center, but, you know, this is really a question for the board, and again, I'm, like I said, I'm new to the district, so I'm just trying to figure out how it works, and proposing that possibly you can post the full agenda, because the meetings obviously aren't, I'm sorry, the meeting minutes aren't entirely, so I just wanted to know what the difference is with the week, that's all.
Yeah, and I could just say that I, I know that it's important, and working in a previous district, we get posted personnel online, but we also, you know, kept the board informed of those recommendations throughout the process, so there's no, you know, if there are questions that happen for me, and I think that's why we normally have an executive meet the week before, or before this meeting. So it's all over for discussion.
Anything you're seeing overnight, particularly, so thank you.
No, I'm scared. Thanks.
First of all, I'd like to wish Ms. Jarvis luck in the election next week, along with Mr. Ferrantino, Mr. Panero, Mr. Desti, and Mr. Mado, who are also here tonight. But in relation to election, election, I have a question about you, Jeff, or any board here with reference, $100,000 reference, would you pass?
2014, 2016.
Thank you, Mado. You might have not heard that happen on this, I don't know. My question to you is, I personally work pretty hard in trying to get that asked along with, not all of you know who do, and a lot of people here. I found out recently that the air conditioning in the high school was removed, but man, I don't have a pretty cold here right now.